Well, we do the pledge first. Let's all stand in our remote locations. And begin. Dennis, you can leave us in the pledge tonight.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Must have been a good voice. Well done. All right, Kelly, the roll call, please.
Kim Connor.
Here.
Dennis Gagnon. Peter. Peter, yeah. Laura O'Connell.
Here.
Neil Tomlin.
Here.
Heidi Window.
Here.
And Neil Zuckerman.
Here. Okay, let's do the approval of the minutes. Oh, actually, before I said it, welcome everyone to the October Town of Phillips Town Planning Board meeting. Welcome all. I don't know how many members. We have thirty participants, including ourselves. So, welcome to the members of the public and the other hangers-on and applicants. I realize that in about twenty-eight minutes, there may be a twenty-seven, maybe enormous drag of our attendees. We're going to head to the dueling town halls of our two presidential candidates. I guarantee that that will be more entertaining than this, but please stay.
That's for sure.
I'd like to keep you. Well, I didn't say, I didn't say enjoyable. I just said entertaining. So, continue with the business of actually running government efficiently. Let's continue, which is a return of escrow, oh, sorry, approval of the minutes. Kind of a motion for the approval of the September minutes, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Extentions, okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. Return of escrow, Chengdu Moth. I guess I'll go to Steve. Steve, any questions, any objections?
No, we're ready to have that returned.
Okay, kind of a motion to return that escrow, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Peter, second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dennis. Any discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes, okay. The escrow is so returned. Okay, I will now accuse myself, so we can handle the matter of Heitman and Fleming. I turn this over to First Vice Chair, Kim Connor. Can you have the floor?
Okay. So, we had a site visit. And now we're ready to talk about to talk about the project. I suppose at this point, we could, do we go to the applicant's consultant to say any last words and then we'll talk about it? Is that possible?
If you want to go to the applicant's consultant, you certainly can. We usually throw it to Ron before we, before we go to either the applicant or the board members, but that's
The second.
It could go either way.
Let's throw it to Ron, then.
Okay. Thank you. As Kim indicated, the planning board conducted a site visit on October four. I was unable to attend that. And I visited the site later in that week. Then I checked in with the acting chair, just to understand what comments were offered at their meeting. And that, all of those got summarized in a memorandum that you had before you dated October thirteen. After it was reviewed and accepted by the board, I also forwarded that to the applicant's design engineer. I've had a few informal discussions with him. And if he's on tonight's meeting, he may wish to discuss any open issues. Otherwise, they're just matters for him to formally respond to. There's a few issues that the board should be aware of. I don't know if it came up at the site visit. But there are conservation easements over that, portions of that property. There's two separate ones, one held by Cenac Hudson and a second by Open Space Institute. The board's aware it lies along a designated ridge line. So, there are issues with that overlay district that have to be satisfied. But the applicant is aware of and addressing those in the application. So, given that, I would turn it over to the design engineer, if he's online. That would either be Glenn Watson or Jason.
Glenn.
Snyder.
This is Glenn Watson. I think Jake, basically here, I think better, he's better able to explain what's going on there. Hop in with a couple of things before he turns on. I do want to report. We appeared before the Conservation Board the other night. They went over it. They they are going to issue a letter, basically basically saying that they're satisfied with what's going on there. They did note a couple of things, but I think you can expect a positive report from the Conservation Board through Max Garfinkel. I think Mr., Jason, you want to pick up here, or Mr. Heitman?
Yeah, this is, this is Roland. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I met Max Garfinkel on site. I don't remember exactly what day, a couple, about a week ago, maybe. And we went through everything and he told me on site that everything looked good, everything looked fine. I showed him the details of the site plan. And he thought there was no issues from his side and he was going to respond to whoever he was supposed to respond to.
Actually, at this point, I can advise that the Conservation Board has responded through a letter from Max that's been distributed to the Planning Board as of this point. So, we're aware that the Conservation Board has no issues continuing with the application.
Okay, and then on the, in terms of the easements, I've been in contact with both Open Spaces and the Cenac Hudson. And Open Spaces has already responded with a letter. I forwarded it to Jason Schneider. And I wasn't quite sure how to get it to the board. I just got it a couple of days ago. But, but saying they reviewed the site plan and, and there were, there were no concerns on their side. They were just reminding me about the terms of the conservation easement, which we're abiding by. All that's documented in my proposal in terms of, you know, the color and reflective surfaces and things like that. So, so we're all we haven't issued a letter in time, but they plan on Okay, I I spoke with Cenac Hudson. Can you hear me again?
Yes. Yes.
Spoke to Cenac Hudson. They just haven't issued a letter in time. That's for the corner of the property where we're doing nothing and having, and have no intention. And they said they'll be issuing a letter very shortly, which I'll be happy to forward on to you. I did get a letter today that they were, the twenty-seventh, as part of their overall yearly reviews. And I plan on meeting them then as well.
Very good.
Okay, so is that, that's it for you, Ron?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, at this point, then discussion from the board, does anyone have any comments?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Do either of the easements about the the area where there's going to be a new driveway? Where the new driveway is planned?
The, the Cenac Hudson easement is nowhere near the driveway.
Right, right. I took that from what you said.
And the Open Spaces covers the entire property, so.
Okay. And have you heard back from Open Space?
Yes, I have that letter and I forwarded it to Jason. I just wanted to get it, but they're, they reviewed the site plan. They're fine with it. And just reminded me of the, of the terms about my, you know, the building, et cetera, which we're complying with.
So, there are no restrictions in that easement as to where you can build? It's just the actual nature of the building?
There's no, no restrictions to where I could build or, or no restrictions that would apply at all to my site plan.
Okay. So, I guess we'll receive that before we make a final determination, Ron?
Right. Yeah, at this point, if the applicant or his representatives, I have no further questions. It's just a matter for you know, the design engineer on the applicant's behalf to respond to comments raised in this memorandum for the board's review and then subsequently to move the project forward.
So, the other question we had, I guess, is about the maintenance agreement for the road?
That was provided, Ron, Ron had a copy. I'm not sure how it got distributed beyond Ron, but he did have a copy.
Because I don't think I have a copy.
Yeah, all of those, all of those agreements or easements should be forwarded directly to Kelly for distribution to the board. I did, in fact, get a copy of the roadway maintenance agreement from the design engineer at some point after we put this comment memorandum together. But that remains to be filed with the board.
All right.
We have copies of those easements. I'll see that they're filed, that they're sent to Kelly tomorrow.
Thank you.
So, I'm just looking at the, I'm just trying to remember what the, sorry, this Zoom thing just froze me. So, basically, Ron, we're waiting. Do we also need a stormwater management?
We, we need some information from the applicant. That's, that's been requested. The referrals have obviously also gone out. And there was referrals made to Putnam County Planning and Garrison Volunteer Fire Department. So, those are, those are likely under review by those agencies.
So, what would you say the next step is here?
So, the because they impact steep slopes, a special permit is required and that drives the need for a public hearing. And I think that would be the next matter for you to consider.
I thought that, I thought I read something here. They got rid of that, yeah, that they didn't need to do that because it was a small area.
Oh, it's, okay, I might have forgotten that. The
I don't think so. I think of the special permit, you do need a public hearing. I think you can only waive it for site plan.
No, no, the question is whether the whether they were disturbing regulated slopes. I, I just can't recall if the latest design plans have corrected the slope intrusions.
Oh, yeah.
So, they no longer qualify.
Right, I thought I read in these documents that there was one that said that that no longer was required.
Yeah, I thought that was resolved. I thought that was resolved at the last meeting, that that we're not disturbing any, any of the steep slopes.
Okay, in that case, the public hearing would be discretionary.
Material there, so I thought that was already resolved the last meeting.
Okay. I'm looking quickly through my files, but I don't see it, but the
Maybe Jason, Jason Snyder, if you could, he would be the one most aware of how that was addressed. Jason, if you could comment, please. Well.
Come on, Jason, come on.
Is he in, Kelly?
I let him in earlier. I don't know where he is, though.
He's right, he's there. His name is on the board here.
Okay.
Maybe he went to get a cup of coffee.
Kim, can I ask one last thing? When, I don't mean to take too much time with this, but what, as we were driving up the road, I did notice that there was one slope that looked very steep to me that was kind of denuded. It was, it looked like it was an erosion problem. I don't know if anyone else noticed it. It was like pretty bare. I don't know whether that's just transitional in terms of getting some plantings later, or whether it's, you know, there's some work being done on that particular. It was like a switchback on the road, like you, you, this coming up the hill, you'd go around to the right and that, there was like a very steep slope there, slope side there, that was pretty much bare of any vegetation. And it just was, looked like a, looked to me like it could really, there could be an erosion problem. I don't know if anyone else noticed it.
No, I didn't see that, but I, one of the things that's in Ron's memo here is, I'll read this to you, the board should consider whether a bond would be appropriate to cover possible damage to and restoration of the shared private roadway from the site development plan, which could be released upon visual inspection of the roadway's condition at the project's completion. So, if we feel that we have concerns about the road and whether or not, you know, this heavy equipment coming up and down will, will, you know, make things worse, I assume that that's going to be in the, the stormwater management.
Another, that's really a matter for the board. If there's a concern as being offered tonight, you may want to consider requiring a bond from the applicant to cover that specific concern.
I, I will just say that with my neighbors, in terms of the road maintenance agreement, I'm, we're taking over responsibility for the road maintenance for the entire road. Heitman builders, that is, not me personally, but Heitman builders. So, I'll be responsible for maintenance. I've already talked to them. Should there be any, any, any issues resulting from the construction, I've already, I've already told them I would take care of it. So, we're already working together on that. In addition, we don't really plan on any, taking any material off-site. We plan on being able to, to use, use any material that we have on-site, so we're not planning on trucking in and out, as you thought might be a concern. I went over that with Jason today. We thought we, around the house and, and in the front portion, which is already demarked disturbed area, we could, we could lose any material created. So, you know, just to give you a status, that's really what's going on right now.
And going, going back to the issue with the special permit, I've just looked at their latest revised plan that dated September and, and apparently the the steep slopes have been revised so that the only steep slopes being traversed are being driven by the driveway itself, and that is a permitted disturbance in regulated slopes. So, it does not look like there's any special permit required.
Okay. All right, so.
Well, so we'll have that, excuse me, we'll have that, Mr. Heitman, we'll have that on file before we approve your application.
Right.
Whatever that road agreement is, we'll have a hard copy on.
Yeah, yeah, I have hard copies of all the easements, the road, the road documents. They, I know that Badian Watson has them already. They already have the letter confirming from Open Spaces. The only one piece of information I'm missing is Cenac Hudson, which is due any day. And I'll submit that as soon as, as soon as possible.
Okay. File, it's good.
I'll make sure those documents are sent in in the morning. We had, we do have them.
Then I guess the next thing that we have to talk about is whether we want to have a public hearing. Is that right, Ron?
Right. Yes, discretionary.
So, it's, it's customary. We generally do have a public hearing. Does anyone on the board have an opinion about that? Pro or con?
I think we should have a public hearing.
Okay. Anybody else?
Again, Kim, I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm really not seeing it. I'm not seeing the potential for people being opposed to this. I would, now, I guess I just, I don't see the need for it.
Um, so, I suppose then we can vote. If someone would like to make a motion to have a public hearing. And then we can, and if we get a second, then we'll vote on that.
I'll make the motion.
We have a second. To have a hearing. We have a second? No? Okay. So, I guess in that case, we have everybody here, right? In that case, I guess we will not have a public hearing. We don't. All right, so then what we're waiting on is for next month's meeting to make the approvals, because we'll have to get all the
So, just, just so I understand, then it's approved just pending the documentation coming, so you can officially approve, or is that what it is?
No, we want to see the documentation and then we'll approve.
Okay.
If it's just a matter of filing documentation, does the board want to seek to have resolutions drafted for the next meeting? We can identify all the paperwork required as conditions if they have not yet been received by that meeting.
Anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion. Proceed.
I'll, I'll second, yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any, any opposed? Okay, so the motion passed. So, we'll get all the documentation in and then we'll, you know, have resolutions prepared for next month, Mr. Heitman, which will, you know, providing everything comes in, who would generally move to approve.
Okay, thank you very much. That's, that's great. Thank you very much. I really appreciate all of your help.
Thanks very much. I'm going to hand it back over to Neil Zuckerman.
Thank you. I will be a pale comparison of our First Vice Chair's job. Well done. Okay. Two, two comments I did not make at the top of the meeting, and I apologize. One, as you know, since we've gone Zoom, we are trying to limit the meetings to roughly two hours. We make allowances for things that are ongoing or short matters, but Zoom is exhausting. We are volunteers and we do our best to make it through. So, with that in mind, my second point is on new business, we will not be seeing the Sean Barton application this evening due to insufficiency of material. But I do want to advise the three applicants after that Lombardi Flag and thirty-six twenty-two Route Nine, that we may not get to you, given the weight of three public areas that we have yet to go to. Okay, Ron, Tony, and Kim, Ricky, Richie. So, we'll have to educate me again how to say that. Ricky? Ricky?
Ricky.
Don't you lose my number? I understand. Okay. All right, real life, little giggle. All right, good. So, Ron, walk us through the status right now, please.
Sure. The applicant made an initial submittal at the prior meeting. However, the site plan that was filed was somewhat imprecise, was not very, very clear in terms of building placements and setbacks. So, the board requested some additional data. He did basic issues at this September meeting, but most procedural issues still remain to be done. In the interim, they did file an accurate site plan that is appropriate for the board to move forward. And you've got a technical memorandum from my office that summarizes the, the issues that remain. At the, at the initial meeting, there was a question raised that was referred to the town attorney in terms of whether two residential structures could exist on the same lot within the HC zone. And I leave that to Steve to respond to. After that issue is resolved, you may then want to consider whether you want to make necessary referrals and then determine whether a site inspection is to be accomplished.
Okay, over you, over you, Steve.
Well, at the last meeting, we discussed the fact that they have a legal non-conforming lot, at least as to side yard. I'm not sure if there are any other non-conformities. And they are increasing the degree of non-conformity of their building by putting a second use in it. In this case, residential over first floor commercial. So, they need a referral to the ZBA before they can proceed before this board to seek variance to increase the degree of non-conformity of the existing building. It was also learned for the first time, at least by me, at the last meeting, that they have a trailer on the lot, which constitutes a dwelling unit. Now, under the town code, you can have two family dwellings within the HC district subject to a special use permit from the Planning Board. So, if this could be considered a two-family dwelling, then I don't think they would need any variances in regard to having that second unit on there, but I just don't see having an accessory, accessory, a first, a second floor apartment over commercial, basically the same as an accessory apartment, a little different. And a trailer is being the same thing as having a two-family home. Yes, it's two dwelling units, but it's just a different animal as far as the setup of the two. It's like having two houses on a single lot. Under the code, you can have two houses on a single lot. You can have any multiple uses, as long as you meet the setback and bulk requirements of the code. They don't meet the setback and bulk requirements of the code, as we already discussed in regard to the establishment of the apartment. So, they also need to be referred to the ZBA for a variance in regard to having two dwelling units on a single lot, which doesn't meet the, at least side yard setback requirements of the code. So, the thing for this board to do, in my opinion, is to issue a refer, direct, they refer a letter, be prepared to the ZBA and send them to the ZBA. If you want to schedule a site visit in the meantime, just to move forward, you're certainly free to do that. I don't think I would make referrals or take any other action, though, at this time. I'd wait and see what, what the outcome of the ZBA is, because if they don't get the variances, they're not going to be able to proceed before the Planning Board.
So, that's very helpful advice, Steve. So, I do want to raise a fairly frequent topic, which I don't feel like I have a clarity on, and I'd like your advice on. We have a matter tonight, which I have recused, I will recuse myself of a flag, where the action went before the ZBA and they remanded it to us. And here we have an action that we're doing, that you're proposing we send to the ZBA. I am unclear, and I don't think we historically have a consistent approach about who does it go to first? If a, if a, if a variance is required of a thing, I think we have often then send it to the ZBA, but the ZBA then had something that required a variance and sent it back to us. So, that has a bit of circularity to it. And I'm a little confused about the right protocol, and maybe there are different cases for different situations. And certainly, I am confused. I don't know if others feel the same confusion over that order of operations, to use a math term.
Well, the Planning Board has what you might call original jurisdiction. People can just come to you and apply for relief. The appellate, the, the ZBA, on the other hand, people cannot go directly to. It's an appellate board. The only way to get to the ZBA is either go to the building inspector and get a denial, in which case you can appeal that to the ZBA, or to go to the Planning Board and get a referral. The ZBA technically can't refer anything to the Planning Board. What they can do is say to an applicant, we want input from the Planning Board in regard to an approval you need from them. In this case, site plan, well, in the case you're referring to, site plan approval. And they can ask the applicant to submit an application to the Planning Board, even though the applicant's probably already gone to the building inspector, gotten a denial to get to them to begin with. The applicant can either then refuse to do that, in which case the ZBA can informally ask the Planning Board for advice, but the proceeding that way wouldn't put the applicant in good graces with the ZBA. Or they can apply to the Planning Board, in which case you'll have two applications at the same time proceeding. Difference is that while the ZBA can process theirs to completion, a Planning Board can't process theirs any further than an initial review, because you have to wait for the variances to be granted before you could take action on an application, because it isn't in compliance with zoning otherwise. That's a little long-winded, but I think you get
No, it's, it's actually very helpful. So, to repeat what you said at the end, we cannot bring something to culmination without the ZBA's variance or lack of a variance, I guess.
That's absolutely right. And in fact, you really shouldn't hold a public hearing until the variance issue is resolved, because the public won't have a good idea as to what the final outcome of the, the project's going to look like.
Okay, that's very helpful. So, I, I'm going to make a recommendation, like my, take a, if you will, an informal straw poll of my colleagues. I do not think it is valuable for us to do a site plan visit when we do not know the duration of when we will be then looking at a property. The good chances is a group of volunteers, we're going to forget what the heck we saw. We may have a couple of people leave on the board anyway. And so, given that, I just don't know when we're going to go get back from the ZBA for this matter. I do not believe, speaking for one, that we need a site plan, or, sorry, a site visit at this time. That's my view. I'm happy to take a motion and vote on that comment, though. Is there a motion to do a site plan, a site visit, excuse me, for Ricky?
No.
So, Neil, Neil, you're thinking, let's wait, let, let, let's wait and see what happens with the ZBA.
I just, I, that is not a, I mean, they're an efficient group, just like we are, but it's, it takes time. And I just don't think, I think having stale information that we can't use in the near term doesn't seem like good information to collect, in my opinion.
Yeah, no, and I see what you're getting at, because this comes up with the flag application. So let's, I mean, I'm, I'm tending to agree with you. Let's see what we get back from the ZBA before we move forward.
Any other comments or any motion to vote on?
I'll make a motion that we send this to the ZBA.
All right, excellent.
Steve write a letter.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Sorry, sorry, any discussion? Sorry, sorry, any discussion? Sorry, sorry.
No, we're good.
No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, so what else we need to do, Ron, Steve?
Well, that would be it.
Fine.
The only issue is to identify all the variances that they, they might need. Look, it's incumbent upon them to, to seek all the variances they need. If they go over and don't seek them all from the ZBA, you're going to wind up going back a second time to the ZBA.
Provide the applicant whatever wisdom you have to make them as efficient as possible with Mr. D, okay?
Right, yeah, I think Steve has identified them tonight, but I'll make sure they get transmitted to the applicant.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's move to our first of three public hearings. We're going to start with Magazzino. Kelly, if you wouldn't mind giving the Cliff Note version of the announcement so we can have the public hearing of Magazzino. I turn it over to you, Kelly.
Thank you. Okay, so the action is to approve a site plan and special use permit that will allow the expansion of an existing museum and art foundation facility by constructing a new building, parking and related facilities on a recent required parcel to the south of the existing facility and the relocation of a planned employee residential structure and related facilities on a parcel to be acquired to the north of the existing facility. Approval of the northern property addition to a subject of a subdivision application being processed simultaneously with this site plan and special use permit.
All right, thank you very much. I think then I'll turn it over to the, I think Glenn, are you going to give the talk? Or someone else from the Magazzino family can do that?
I'll start off with it, with a couple of, a couple of things and then I'll turn it over to Miguel Quismundo. I'm not sure if he's here. He's supposed to be. I don't see him on the board that I have. I'm going to first talk about the subdivision.
He is, he is here. He is.
Okay, great. Can I share my screen if that's okay? Okay, you see my map?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, basically, the whole, this is a quick, quick version here. The, the Magazzino is intending to buy and Cybertron is intending to sell a parcel portion of its property to Magazzino. If you look to the left of the screen where my cursor is, you see on the top, you see the existing conditions today. The blue being Magazzino, the yellow being Cybertron, Mr. Fadden's corporation. The application is to adjust the lot line such that this, in the second panel, colored panel, the green area will be taken, the lot line will be adjusted so that the green area goes from being yellow to being blue. And notice how we quickly and cleverly put green in the between the yellow and the blue. And then the bottom panel shows you what we're going to end up with, the green, the blue parcel being, being larger by the amount of the green in the upper panel and the, and the yellow being that was smaller. So that's the, that's the application in a nutshell. It in and of itself, it doesn't, doesn't cause anything to happen. It, it's just an application to move a lot line. So with that, if there are any questions about that, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Why don't we keep going and have Mr. Quismodo give his talk?
Well, I'll go into our site plan for just a moment. That's going to take me a second or two to figure out. Site plan submission. Site plan sheet two of seven. Okay, now here you have the whole of the Magazzino piece, including the area that will, that we are hopeful be, will be annexed onto the Magazzino property. The green line is the wetlands buffer line. Everything to the north and west of that green line is in, is in wetlands buffer or further in, in a wetlands. And as, as you could see, you can see the, from the plan, that nothing is being proposed in that area. There is part of the building in this, towards the root nine end of the building that's already in the, in the buffer area. That's, was in there before Magazzino acquired any of the property. The proposal really is to, the main thrust of the proposal is to build a new building. I have my cursor down here. I hope you can see it, showing you the location of the new building. Construct an additional access that will give us access in and out from Vineyard Road as well as the existing entry into Magazzino. So typically, traffic we expect will flow into the main lot of Magazzino, which is already there. Overflow and specific, specific, specifically oriented visits will, will probably go south through a new driveway and into a parking lot to the lower and the southern part of the property to access the new building. We have added to the building the elements of the drainage of stormwater pollution prevention plan. We did do testing out there, which, which is adequate. As Mr. Gainer pointed out in his memo, we have not finished the actual plan with regard to stormwater management. We have, we have calling some, some additional parking up on the upper part of the property. There's a pathway, existing pathway down into the main parking lot. I should have said back here at we've, planning a set of sidewalks that come up from the new building and across in front of the parking so that there can be some pedestrian traffic between the existing buildings and the proposed buildings. The new septic area is, is a combined septic area. And this area to the north of the parking lot, to the east of the main parking lot, to the north of the new parking lot, it will collect sewage from the new building. It will collect sewage from the, I gotta say this right, three-bedroom residential structure we're proposing up in, in the northeast corner of the property. That building was originally planned for the original parcel and it could, it could be put back there, but it's, it's sort of interferes with the way the gardens and the display outside, outside display area are, have developed over time. So we are planning to have this three-bedroom structure up here with some related parking. The sewage would be carried down to the common area. I think at that point, I've covered most of the, oh, and I, I know there's a question that was in, I was reminded by Mr. Gainer's memo that there was a question for Mr., for Mr. Gaba with, about keeping the animals on the property. There is a, a small corral in this area just south of the park, new parking that's, that does today house a couple, I, I want to say four or five, but I'm not actually sure the number of pygmy donkeys. I think that's a whole story and I, in terms of the site plan, the testing is done. We are, we're confident of that. And Miguel would take over and take us, I'll give up my screen. Or I answer any question anyone might have.
Well, let's keep going. Miguel, maybe you can come up and?
Okay. Hello, can you hear?
Yes.
Okay. So good evening, everybody. I, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure we had to present, but let me see. Can you see the screen?
We see you.
I can't hear.
We see you.
See you.
So. Let me see how to share screen. All right, there we are. All right, I think now we can see the, the site plan is basically representing what Glenn already described. The, the parking of the existing and the, this is the, the utility building that we already have. And we're going to tee off of, of this bar building to supply power and fire protection and the generator to cover the new building. So it's a two-story building with, this is the landscape plan that we discussed already. Where we already have the plans on site waiting to get the approval so we can plant to them. Basically, we're supplying the, the species that you can see on the upper right corner, seventy of the, 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 it's called Western Arborist. So everything ever greens on the side to screen the, the building from the road as much as possible. Also wanting to create a barrier for the suns on Route nine. So we, we presented these already and the, the trees are going to be a foot high or they are already a foot high and obviously will grow with time. These are, this is a screenshot of the application for the signs that we would like to install on both ends of the property, on the north and the south, advising the, the arrival to Magazzino. And this, this is the old, is the old lighting plant. You already have the updated one that has no last sky requirements. These will be the elevations that we already discussed. So basically, the building is a two-story and has a continuous height of twenty-two feet, except at the north corner where the building goes up to thirty-three feet, which is below the, the maximum height of forty feet. So we're, we're in comfortable compliance. As we discussed before, we've eliminated the equipment on the roof. So nothing's going to be, no mechanicals are going to be displayed. So trying to have a, a clean and clean and simple roof. And, and the building will respond to the existing one. You've already visited the site. So we'll repeat the same language of, of the existing Magazzino. And these are the, the different elevations from the different sites. This is the east elevation. And these are the north and south elevations. And this was the, the gazebo application that we also talked about, which the surface is already impervious now. It has this two-by-two granite floor. And we just want to remove the tent and have a more permanent gazebo in there. So we, we've already had problems in winter. So we want to have a metal structure and, and, and make the maintenance easier. This, this, going back to the screens, I'm sorry, the, to the signs, this slide is, is out of place. So you can see basically the, the site, the signs will say the name of the facility and the distance to the entrance on both the south and the north. And finally, we have a 3D view of, of the existing on the left. And this would be the proposed volume for the new.
Miguel, this is Glenn. I assume you hear me, but could you go, just go back to that screen? The first screen that showed the sign at the south end?
Just a second, yeah.
Back further, not that, the other one.
I'm sorry, Glenn, which one do you, do you want to see?
Keep going back. No more, that, that's the one. You just passed it.
Landscape.
No, the next one back. I don't know which way to go.
People wonder why it takes so long to do these Zoom.
There you go. You, you got it. I just wanted to, I did this, you talked about the sign, which is fine here. But I, I just wanted to point out to the board that the left panel demonstrates what you see today or during the winter and the right panel shows some of the effect of the screening that we're proposing.
Thank you, yes.
And that's all I had. I just wanted to make that clear.
Great. If, if no more from the applicants, I'll turn to Ron and then Stephen succession for any comments before we go to the public.
Yeah, the project's been before the board for an extended period. They finally, at this point, reached the public hearing stage, which is being conducted tonight. There's the one zoning issue that the board has previously raised and it was referred to the board's attorney in terms of the animals being kept on the property, which I'm sure Steve can respond to. And it's just a matter to, once, once the public hearing is closed, you can consider future actions on the matter. But zoning issue has to be resolved and the public hearing has to be closed. Secure remains to be done.
Dave? I looked into the issue of keeping donkeys, which was the latest surprise with the Magazzino application. It does not appear that keeping animals would be permitted accessory use with the museum use. We crafted an amendment to the town code in regard to museums. However, as we've previously discussed, under the town code, multiple uses are allowed on a property as long as it meets the bulk requirements of the code. And under the code, agricultural uses are permitted in pretty much every zone, certainly in the OC. So if keeping the donkeys is viewed as a separate agricultural use, because they meet all the bulk requirements, it would be permitted under the code. And I think they're free as long as they acknowledge that there's going to be keeping of animals as part of their application. Um, I think they're, they're free to, to, to do so. The only caveat I have on that is that, well, keeping of animals is permitted in, like I said, pretty much every district. There are restrictions on keeping the animals, agriculture uses, that is, on any lots that are used for residential purposes. This lot is over seven acres in size, so they, they don't really have a problem as far as being able to do it. But I would call the applicant's attention to code section one seventy-five dash thirty-seven, which imposes disclosure requirements in regard to the extent of any agricultural use on property, which includes or is by a residential use. And there is a residential use on this property in regard to the three-bedroom home. So there may be some notes that need to be added to the plans just to satisfy the requirements of one seventy-five thirty-seven in regard to the extent and location of the agricultural use. But that aside, I, I really don't see a problem with that.
Okay, thank you. We typically turn to board members first and then go to the public. So I'll, I'll, I'll open up to my colleagues to ask any questions at this point. And here we know, I know, let's turn it over to the public. Kelly, oh, Neil, go ahead, please. Neil Toman, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm sorry, Neil. We're, 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 what are we trying to accomplish here tonight? What, what, where are we headed with this?
This is the public hearing. This is where the public now weighs their, gives us their opinion on this project.
Okay, all right. All right, I'll, okay, let's go.
Unless you have a question of the, or you're asking a procedural question about where we are after this.
No, I don't. I just, I, you know, I looked at the, you know, Steve's sort of throwing out some semi-agricultural considerations and, but that's, that's fine. I, I. I let's go into public, sure.
Okay, all right. Kelly, who any members of the public would like to speak at this point?
Yes, this is Nat Prentice. I'm letting him in. Nat, are you there?
How about now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I'm sorry that I'm fooling with my buttons. I would just like to indicate my degree of high degree of support for this project. Mostly, I've seen the plan and I like it, but I'm mostly making a comment about the high quality, the people involved here at Magazzino and the positive impact they've made on the community at large. I've worked with him in a number of circumstances involving the town and the residents of the town to the benefit of those residents. And I think these are the kind of people that are so totally community oriented that they will take whatever recommendations the planning board has for them in connection with approving the property. So it's, these are great people and I'd like to see this project be approved.
Okay, thank you very much, Nat. Kelly, is any other other members of the public?
Nobody has their hand up, no.
All right. Barring any alternative view from the board, I'd suggest we close this public hearing. Can I have a motion to that effect, please? Kim, second. Peter, we'll take Peter as the second. All in favor, say any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. All right, so now that we've done the public part and I am appreciate Nat's both written and verbal remarks of support, that's helpful to have that endorsement. Can we just recall now, let's just now back to Neil Toman's question, procedurally, then where are we to go? We have a, we have a donkey issue. We've had discussions in the past of traffic. We have discussions of of stormwater. Where are we, Ron, in terms of next steps?
There are still technical issues to be resolved, but those those basically are matters that I will assure get resolved and I'll work directly with the applicant's representatives. Other than that, the next procedural issues are just to consider a secret declaration and eventually consider the site plan approval.
And subdivision approval.
Right, that's right.
Steve, any other comments on procedure?
Oh, the only thing I would say, Neil, is, you know, in terms of a negative declaration, I think that would be appropriate for this project. It's an existing project that they're enlarging, but it isn't a rubber stamp. Either the board's gonna have to go through the considerations in order, under secret, in order to reach negative declaration as opposed to a positive declaration. And, you know, the IS is, you know, as on other occasions been required. But again, I I think we're looking at a negative declaration.
Are we on safeguard at this point to 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 vote on a neg deck at this point? Or do we?
Well, I think what you want to do is have Ron prepare it and then the board consider it and then vote upon it.
Yeah, I mean, I we typically vote to direct Ron to do that.
Yeah, but then you look at it and decide if you're gonna adopt it. It isn't a dumb deal.
Sorry, that's that's the must be E25 heading to Central.
I thought I said the secret word.
All right, so let's let's, I may have a motion to direct Ron to prepare materials for a neg deck for our next meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Peter, Kim, second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, okay, we'll have that prepared for the next meeting. And hopefully, we can resolve the donkey issue.
No, I think it's done. The donkey issue's over. The only the only issue is if they have to add a note or something like that on the plan. And I'll let the applicant take a look and at that code section, decide if anything needs to be added. The other question is, do you want an approval resolution for consideration next month's meeting?
That seems appropriate, in my opinion. Anyone opposed to that at this point? Okay, a quick vote on for approval resolution for the next meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Kim, second.
Second.
Peter, all any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, okay, next meeting, we'll look at those documents and approve. Thank you very much. Move on to our second public hearing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's move on to CRS, the continuation, deciding our third third session for this public hearing. Kelly, I think you can do just the abbreviated version, given this is a continuation tied mostly to our the timeliness or lack of timeliness on the additional traffic study.
CRS International 2761 Route 9. The applicant is seeking a site plan approval for the construction of a 20,340 square foot warehouse slash office structure in order to expand the applicant's current apparel warehouse distributia distribution business currently located at 3027 Route 9 at J Cox Road. The property involved in the application concerns the former MHCP self-storage site along the west side of New York State Route 9 between Lane Gate Road and 301, which was never developed.
Okay. Glenn or any other other members, anything new you want to share since the last meeting? I think maybe that, again, the topic, I believe, was the revised traffic study.
I I think that, I I don't know, John, is John Canning there?
Let's see. Yes, he is. I'm gonna let him in right now.
Yeah, I think I I put up the I put up the the site plan, but he may want to share something. And I I think that you're right, the major topic here was was the traffic study that was completed. It was handed in late. We didn't discuss it to any degree. So I think that John will show you that we more than meet any any test for using that. We're having our our entry there. So John would take over. I'd appreciate it.
Ron, did you want to say something, though? It looks like you just unmuted. Do you want to say something, Ron? No, all right, John, go ahead then.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Good to see you again. Hope everybody's well. So last month, we had submitted a traffic study, unfortunately, and again, my apologies. It was handed in at the last minute, not something that I like or you like. And I'm happy to be back here again this week or this month. So we were prepared that report in response to a number of questions you had. I'm gonna try and run down them in the order of the report, which I have here in front of me. Ron had a couple of questions regarding the original study. He would like a little clarification on some of the information in it. So we put some labels on and put some explanations in it and sent it back in again rather than redoing the whole document. I hope that that was sufficient to lead you from the text to the tables and explain them and back. The site plan has also been modified at Ron's request. Sheet 10 of 11, I believe, of Glenn's package to show which couple of bushes on the east side of Route 9, south of the driveway were being removed. And I think you're familiar with the twin trunked tree on the west side of Route 9 that's been removed. So they're now shown on the plan. And there's also a triangle or it's not so much a triangle. It's basically a trapezoid. It's about 10 feet deep that runs along the east side of the road and about 10 feet deep that runs along the west side of the road, north and south of the driveway, that the applicant is required to maintain free of obstruction. The whoever owns the road, not sure what the agreement is between the town and the state, does that as a general rule and is responsible for that. But this is a, the applicant will be responsible to make sure that they do their job properly in that regard, to provide the necessary sidelines. The next question or item, it was queried as to whether the data that we had previously collections was sort of a once-off thing. The speed seemed low, so we went back out. We did new traffic studies. We found that the speed in the northbound direction or the southbound direction was identical, which was 49 miles per hour is the 85th percentile speed. In the southbound direction, it increased from 52 to 54 miles per hour. So it's an increase, but I don't think it's, you know, a dramatic increase. We revised table three of the report and included it in our new memorandum. So that increased the site distances looking to the right or traveling northbound from, I think it was 575 to 600, which is in tables, the revised table three. And I think it was from 455 to 480 now for the stopping site distance. Both of these distances, the 600 and the 480 are well less than the 710 feet that will be provided. It was also questioned as to whether we were familiar with the nature of the way drivers drove on that section of the road and in particular, whether there might be problems having this driveway close to the intersection of First Street and the homes in there. So we went out and we observed traffic operating conditions. And we noted that there were a total of eight vehicles that are entered or exited the street during the busiest hour. And when you consider that the proposed application is going to generate approximately 20 trips, you can see that there's really not a lot of interaction between them. They're both very low volumes. We did notice that one person came southbound on Route 9 and because there was no traffic coming against them and they wanted to go back north on Route 9 for some reason, they turned into First Street, turned around and turned out and left in kind of one fluid motion. There was a question as to whether operating conditions at the driveway would be different or substantially impacted if the level of truck activity that we have projected were to be twice what we had projected. We had projected about one or two truck trips in the busiest hour. So we did an analysis and provided in the report. We had two truck strips coming out and then we took that analysis and we and we doubled the number of truck trips coming out from from two to four. And let me see if I can share my screen. Probably not, but I'll give it a shot. Okay. That's working. Can you see what I'm sharing?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. This is the sheet 10 of 11 from Glenn's package. And if I can zoom in, you can see we have the trapezoid that we have designated and we have a node remove tree. Though this is the individual tree, remove tree with twin trunks to clear site distance and area to be maintained free and clear of vegetation between 30 and 72 inches high at all times. So and and you'll note that the trees are behind the the line. But if any of the branches extend over the line, they're required to be between 30 and 72 inches so you can see down through them. And it, you know, it's easier to maintain it as long, but if for some reason the applicant would like to put in some decorative flowers, we're not opposed to that as long as they keep them low. On the other side, it's pretty much the same. We've identified the two shrubs that need to be removed and we've designated an area that's to be kept clean. So that's that. With regard to the levels of service and the operation of the driveway. So we looked at the morning and the afternoon peak hours. On the left side of the table are the analyses with two trucks. So the eastbound left and right, that's coming out of the site driveway. The average delay is projected to be 28 seconds in the morning with two trucks. And they're almost 31 seconds in the afternoon with two trucks. And if you increase the number of trucks from two to four, it would go from 28 seconds to 29 seconds and 30 seconds or 31 seconds to 32 seconds. That's primarily because the number of vehicles is so low. It's exiting, it's about 10. You've got like 10 coming in and 10 going out. So the number of vehicles is so low that you only have them doing it one at a time. So each one takes about the same amount of time, which is about 28 seconds. And then the next, if you have an extra second truck, it'll come along five minutes later and it'll take it 28 seconds. On the turns, turning in the northbound left turn, on average, vehicles will have to wait 10.3 seconds to turn in and that will increase to 10.8 seconds. And in the PM, it'll be 9.5 to 9.8 seconds. I was running my mouth a little bit earlier, so here's our revised table three. So here's the site, this site distance change from 400 and from 575 to 600, which is less than the 710. And the stopping distance, stopping distance is the distance required to comfortably stop. These are the the language that's used by the engineers under unexpected conditions on a wet roadway. So they're not expecting you to screech to a halt. You're supposed to stop based on the engineers at 11.2 feet per second or something like that acceleration rate. The next item, I go back to my report. You'll have to forgive me, I've got it highlighted so I can help my feeble brain work here, remember it all. We talked about the trucks. So that's that's the table. There was a question as to what the current site distance is because we had the two shrubs. So we went back out on the east side of the road. We went back out and measured the current site distance is 540 feet, which is less than we would like to see, but it's not terrible and it will be improved. And then the last question was, what would the site distances be for the 90th and the 95th percentile? So in the engineering world, basically, you don't design for the worst thing ever because then you'd have something that was overdesigned for 99% of the time. But you don't design for the average either because then it's underdesigned for half the time. And the metric that the engineering world has settled on is the 85th percentile in the traffic world anyway. But the 95th percentile would would be 510 feet. The 480 feet would increase to 510 feet in the northbound direction and the 95th percentile would increase to 525 feet, where 710 feet will be provided. In the southbound direction, the 85th percentile will increase from 425 feet to 465 feet. And the 95th percentile will increase to 480 feet, where 840 feet will be provided in the southbound direction. And then the rest of the report is basically just the supplementary data. We've included the new traffic volumes. Thank you. We included the old traffic volumes. We included the new speed studies and the new traffic analyses. So we've looked at a lot of things on this project. It is a state highway. It's designated for this type of activity. Glenn's company or firm has been coordinating with DOT to make sure the design meets of the driveway meets their standards. We've looked at truck turning. We've looked at speeds. We've looked at quite a number of things. We're comfortable that that this is a superior driveway as compared to some of the other driveways. I know there's a cement facility or down the road. And if you come northbound on Route 9, you come around a bend and it's right there. That was probably started 40, 50 years ago. We're confident that this is a much better driveway than that facility. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And I hope that I've been responsive to your queries so far.
Thank you, Mr. Canning. I think, given your offer, I would like to open it up to board members and then we can come back to Ron and Steve. Any board members have any questions? Heidi, go ahead, please.
So my question, Mr. Canning, is is it correct that the in terms of actually observing how the traffic was functioning at that area? You observe, the observation was one hour, just one hour?
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, I I I would just say that in light of what we've heard, how was the choice made to observe for one hour? I I understand from what you've said that you picked an hour where you thought the traffic might be busiest.
Right.
But is it is it typical to observe for only one hour when safety, major safety concerns have been raised by by neighbors of the property and others in the community? I I'm just wondering if that's standard, if one hour of observation is considered adequate to counter those considerations?
So no, I I understand your question. Traffic safety is sort of a very random thing. So if you had an intersection like that, you might have an accident once every three or four years. So for us to see that, we're not going to sit out there for three or four years. We go out, we spend some time there. We get a sense of what sort of an intersection it is. It's reasonably well-designed. It's reasonably low volume. We saw some people driving in and out of it. There's no reason to suspect that there's a there's a problem at that location. If we felt that there were poor sidelines at that intersection or if we, if there were other issues that led us if there were other issues that led us to believe that it would be a problem, we could have spent some more time there, but we didn't feel that it was necessary.
Do you, do you ever spend more than one hour studying a, a similar type of situation where concerns have been raised?
Sure. Yep.
How many hours?
Well, it, well, it depends on the complexity of the intersection. Typically what would happen is if we had a problem location, we would gather the information much as we have here, the traffic volumes and stuff like that. And then we would go out and see if there were any sideline issues or we do speed studies, which we did, we got two weeks of speed studies at this location. So there's a range of things that you do. And then, you know, if we're, if we are out there and we, because this is not a busy intersection. So if we pick the intersection of, let's say Cold Spring Road and Route 9, 301 and Route 9, that's a much busier intersection. So we might have to look at left turns from one street to the other, the, the signal clearance and stuff like that. So we would probably spend longer there, but there's not a lot to see frankly at, at First Street.
Well, and I don't want to take more than my share of the time, but I thought that the concern that I was trying to raise last time or when we last discussed this was not necessarily the busyness of this spot, but the fact that when someone slows down, traffic goes around them. So, and that's something you could not observe. So that's not directly, it's not solely related to speed, but also to other aspects of the site, of that particular spot of the road that could perhaps only be observed physically by watching what's going on with the traffic at the site. And it's, I think the concern was raised by people who spoke to the board and also is kind of consistent with, I think, at least some of the board members' own experience of driving past that site on a frequent basis and watching what's happening with the traffic. So my own, my concern is that one hour does not necessarily provide a lot of data for us to consider.
I understand. I, I will say that the, the level of activity at the driveway will be about twice the level of activity at, at First Street. So they're comparable. If, if this was a supermarket where you'd have hundreds of people going in and out at the same time, it would be, you know, a, a different story perhaps.
Let's get, let's get some other board members in here with any questions they may have. Any other board members with questions? Okay, let's get Ron and Steve in here then, and then we'll go to the public. Ron, you're on mute.
Thank you. As the board's aware, this is just a continuation of the public hearing. This is the third opportunity for the public to comment on the project. Previously, the board's accomplished unnecessary referrals. With respect to Seeker, the board has also gone through a coordinated review. No, no other involved agencies have raised any objections. So at this point, the board can acknowledge that their lead agency for the project and pay, can make a declaration of significance whenever you believe you have sufficient information to arrive at a decision. There's some continuing technical issues that are identified in my latest technical memorandum. And again, procedurally, it's just a matter to close the public hearing. When the board thinks that all public comment has been received. And then you'd subsequently consider making decisions on the seeker declaration as well as the approvals that are requested by the applicant.
Any questions for Ron? So Ron, I have, I have a couple of questions for you. One, you, you've noted a special permit is required for, for the steep slope situations. Does it require any additional work, public involvement, et cetera? Since that has not been something we've been talking about to date.
I'm sorry, Neil, you were breaking up.
Sorry, you're mentioning your memo about steep slopes and requiring a special permit. Do we require any additional public input on the steep slopes?
It's available for public comment. It's, it's a obviously the ordinance requires a special permit to be granted whenever such disturbances are planned. They're working in the very rear of the site where the steep slopes exist. They're also doing what they believe to be significant landscaping to mitigate visual impact. So that's the extent of the disturbances planned. Matter had been referred to the conservation board as well for that reason. I, I don't believe there's ever offered comments on the matter.
My second to last question for you, Ron, is you, you've mentioned at the end of your paragraph under procedural matters, you, you used a phrase, quote, "and will not adversely affect neighboring properties," end quote. And will not adversely affect neighboring properties. Obviously, many of the public comments, maybe for tonight, have talked about the impact on that. For me in particular, we got flaws you used.
I think that, in my view, based on the comments we've heard, really relates to the desire for the board to review the landscaping being proposed. Again, that's been raised at a few of the public hearing meetings that we've had to date on the matter. They've enhanced the landscaping in the rear and to some extent on the sides. So the applicant has attempted to respond to it. That's, that's one final matter that I will review in somewhat more detail after tonight's meeting, but, but the applicant has been responding to that concern.
Thank you. All right, Steve, any comments you want to add?
Well, obviously the main purpose of the appearance tonight is to see if there are any additional comments from the public, any additional questions from the board such that you can hopefully be in a position to close the public hearing tonight. The, there are a number of issues with the project. I understand that, but, but kind of the main reason that it was kept open last time was because of the late submission of the additional traffic study. Now, Ron may view things differently. The board may view things differently, but from legal perspective, the issues presented by traffic study, the additional information on it were, one, is the design of the access to the roadway sufficiently safe that the project can be approved at all? And two, if, if so, is the information that you discerned through the traffic study, does that merit imposition of conditions on the project? For example, a limitation on the number of truck trips per hour that could be could, could go to the site. I don't know the answers to those things, but those are, I think, issues that should be focused on as you round out the, complete the public hearing and, and as the engineering review goes forward.
Very, very helpful. Any questions from board members of Steve before we go to the public? Laura, please.
Just two clarifications from Ron in your, in your memorandum. Question, so you mentioned the issue regarding the site lighting. Am I going to assume that you're going to work with the applicant on that? And then are they going to resubmit a lighting plan so that we can review that? Or are you going to just review that with the applicant based upon, you know, the requirements to minimize light pollution to the neighbor, to the neighboring property?
And the, the, some total of all the site plans they prepare will include a lighting plan. And it's going to address the standard requirements of the board to design a dark sky guideline.
Great. Okay. Okay. And then the same thing goes with the dumpster because I do know that we had that conversation. So when you were talking about the, the adjacent properties and the new plantings, is that in relation to the enclosure of the dumpster in the back?
That, that includes consideration of the dumpster in the back.
Okay. Got it.
Any other questions for Steve or Ron? Okay, to the public, please. Kelly, is any public speakers?
No, there's nobody as of right now.
I, I, I believe that I'd like to suggest, let's take a motion to close the public hearing then unless there's any other reason to keep it open. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm sorry. Their hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, they just raised.
Oh, that's fine.
Nancy Burner. Nancy, are you there? Nancy?
Yeah, she's up. Yes, Nancy, go ahead, please.
Um, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm coming late to this discussion. I know there have been other public hearings and you've had other discussions, but I didn't hear anything in the presentation about the traffic plan that addressed the problem that I'm most concerned about, which is these huge trucks that don't make the turn perfectly and have to kind of back and fill to actually turn into the driveway, backing up the traffic into that really tough intersection at 301 and 9, which since I live just west of 301, I get to experience all the time. It's a very tough intersection. So I worry having already seen what happens to the traffic with these huge trucks at the intersection of J Cox and 9, I assume we're talking about the same trucks. Um, you know, some of the drivers seem able to negotiate that driveway, but a lot of them don't. And, you know, the traffic just comes to a dead halt. You're driving long and a dead halt. So I, my question is really, I understand the traffic study looked at all kinds of issues, but did it look at that particular condition?
Some really good point, Nancy. We, we did in our first of the three public hearings, spent a lot of time talking about the size of the trucks as well as, and I think our last public hearing, we had a presentation on the turning radius. And I remember discussions of arcs in multicolored ones to that point that Mr. Kenny, maybe you want to respond to Nancy's question. You're, you're on mute, Mr. Kenny.
My apologies. So we've worked with DOT. We've designed the driveway to, it, it's the maximum they will allow. It's 30 feet wide and I think it has 33, 33 foot curb returns on the radii, which is much greater than many of the driveways along Route 9. We did do truck turning template analysis for the largest vehicles that would ever visit the site. Those are WB67s, which is a 53 foot trailer. Few of the vehicles visiting the site, probably less than 10% of the trucks visiting the site will be vehicles of that size. We ran an analysis where they could see if they could turn, traveling south, right into the driveway, traveling north, left into the driveway and then exiting the driveway, turning to the right and turning to the left while staying within the double yellow lines on Route 9. And we determined that they would be able to do so. So we believe that this is a superior driveway on Route 9 and that, that even the largest vehicles will be able to turn into and out of it. And we provided the, the data to the board to review.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Any other members of the public, Kelly?
No.
Okay. Can I have a motion then to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second, Neil, any discussion?
I have a question for Steve.
Oh, please.
Or not for Steve, I mean for the enchant, but do, at what point does the DOT permit it issue? Like, should we be seeing a copy of the DOT permit before we approve this? Ron, maybe?
Very, very often it be, it merely becomes a condition of approval. The uncertainty that we have had, we have not seen any interplay or any communications between the applicant and DOT. So while we still have John on the presentation, I would ask him the status of any submittals you've made to DOT or any comment letters that have come back in, in response to the submittals.
Sure. With regard to process, typically you're not issued, DOT will not issue you a permit until you have a local approval. But they will review your material and they'll tell you, okay, you're on the right track. When you come in, you have to comply with all of these standards. That process was handled by Jason at a Glenn's office and he was the one who coordinated with them. So I, I really can't say how far along in the process they are, but I do know that he has been communicating with them.
I see Jason there, so maybe Jason can tell.
Can you unmute him?
Banging on, right, right on.
Kelly, can you want to mute him from here? Jason, you're still muted, maybe on your device? All right. Well, let's keep going because I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm sorry, Neil. I just wanted to weigh in. I, I think there's been a lot of good discourse here about sightlines, about turning radiuses, radii, or and there, there's been an element of asked and answered. They've, they've had a lot of good questions. I think they've got a lot of good responses from the applicant. So I, I sort of want to put the question out there to Steve because there's, there's a lot of public sentiment, well, what if it doesn't work? And I think where a lot of this comes from is from down the road where we've seen the other operation from this applicant not work. So Steve, what would our, what would our remedies be? I mean, are there any injunctive measures available if we, we approve this and then we find out that it just doesn't work?
Oh, if, if you grant them site plan approval and they have, you know, vested rights under it because they make some improvements and reliance on the, the site plan, you do not have a remedy of saying, we want to reopen the site plan. What we had approved doesn't work. You really need to make sure that you approve a plan which is appropriate for actual use in the real world before you approve it.
Okay.
So here's what I'm going to suggest. We have a motion on the table. I got a, I got a, I got a motion, I got a movement, but I didn't get a second to close the public hearing. I'd like to finish that action. Sorry, what happened, Steve?
I thought it was seconded.
Was seconded. We just didn't vote on it.
Okay. Well, I, I never got to say, let's have a discussion. So can we just, let's finish that matter first. We don't get the public hearing open to debate among ourselves.
Right.
Vote on that, please.
I vote yes. Hi.
All opposed, abstentions? Okay, we're closing the public hearing. Okay, that order of business is done. So let me make a suggestion. There are a lot of really good issues that have been raised and I think this board as a group, we need to discuss. We have to discuss the, the sightlines, the, the size of trucks. I think there's some discussion to be had. I think it deserves this space to be done. I'd like to actually have the Kepler public hearing and be able to open and close that one as well this evening. And I'd like to keep this topic for us to discuss next time. I don't, I don't feel like we're ready to take any motions or even direct Ron for actions right now for this property, given the magnitude of the topic. I think there's enough weight from this board on this topic and from the public that deserves a fulsome conversation as a board. That's my opinion. I'm also happy to hear Ron and Steve's view about what we should do at this point, but that's my, my sentiment would be to then have this discussion about the open issues, about the open issues at our next meeting. Otherwise, I think we could spend the rest of this meeting debating this topic.
Can I, can I just? I just called Jason and just to fulfill the missing information that we were going to ask him, he has submitted to the state and you have not received a response.
Well, Glenn, you know what? I think it would actually be really lovely input. I know it's, you know, the state is under all kinds of pressures and we're about one small community in a very big state, but it would be helpful if maybe in the intervening couple of weeks, we could try to enlist an opinion, not that you can drive their behavior, but that would be a great input.
We'll, we'll follow up on it. Yeah.
Thank you. So our folks want to debate this now or will it be okay if we move to the Kepler public hearing and then pick it up? What do you think, Neil?
I, I think we, no, I think we're good. I think we, we, we've covered that there is some discussions still we had about that. So.
Yeah, and I, and I would ask.
I think we've done enough to close the public hearing.
Yeah. So Ron, here's what I'd like to ask you to do. Between you and Steve, I'd like you to put together the major issues that we've been debating. Again, and maybe even caucus the board for those topics for discussion. Again, I think Heidi clearly has still thoughts on the stopping distance and thank you, Mr. Kenny, for your data. It's clearly a discussion about the length of the trucks and as Nancy said, what if they can't manage the turn? It's a really good discussion. We started the steep slopes conversation, albeit way in the back, but I think there's enough to talk about that we should probably discuss them as a board in a coherent way with appropriate time.
Very good.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So let's move on then to the Kepler public hearing. Thank you, sir. Okay. So let's move on then to the Kepler public hearing. Thank you. Thank you, John, and thank you, thank you, um, uh, uh. Glenn. So let's move over to Kepler hearing. Kelly, please read it out.
Andrew Kepler, one seventy sixth Mood Road Garrison, New York. Applicant seeks approval of a site which includes the enlargement of an existing deck, construction of three season room. And a former cart courtyard on their twenty one point eight acre property at one seventy six Mood Road and Garrison.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh. Is this another one of yours, Glenn?
I guess it is. Um, and, uh, I'm here with, um. David Eaton, who's the landscape architect, is the primary designer of this thing. But I'll just give you a very brief. Introduction, a couple of reminders, and I'll ask him to, David, to take over and, and show you more of the details of the plan. I think the entire board was at this site visit. I'm not absolutely certain of that, but. At any rate, this is very near the top end of, um, Moog Road, which is a private road, which has quite a number of houses on it. If you, if I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay.
Please do.
You should have it now. So the, the property is, I think it's seventeen acres or thereabouts. It's at the top of Moog Road. Where my coat, where my cursor is now is the actual end of the road. Uh, and the last turn before you reach that, the Kepler driveway comes, comes off to the right and goes. Up pretty much up along the edge of the ridge line to the house where there's a garage and a parking area today. And, and the lawn in the back and, and, and the landscaping. Basically, the landscaping that's existing today follows the driveway mostly to its left. And when it gets up near the house, it widens out to the left to provide a front lawn for the house and it continues on to the back. Um, and off to the back edge of the property. It's. In large part, it's the white area between the steep slopes. The original plan called for some work, uh, some tree implantings on either side onto the steep slopes area. Um, they have been removed from the plan. I'm going to change my drawing for justice. So give me another second, please. Our most recent contribution to this, um, to this plan set. Uh, and here you see a slightly rotated view. Oh, incidentally, I should have pointed out that this red line going down the line is the, is the ridge line that's, that, that's on the, on the town's maps. As you can see, the, the planting is still in the, in the center of their, uh, basically on the center of the property along the ridge. This plan. Addresses the specific issue raised during your site visit and after your site visit with, uh, Mr. Gainer. Uh, where we're intercepting and, and, and making some crossings of the driveway. To, to, to catch the stormwater and, and relieve it and. Uh, put in some level spreaders, as I can see one here without zooming in too far. Uh, where that energy caused by the concentration of the water is dissipated so that we'll avoid erosion. I think that's about all I have to say on the plan. Um, I do want to report that we were at the zoning board. I mean, sorry, we were at the. Conservation Board on, on Monday, uh, Tuesday this week. As I, as we were for the other project that I mentioned before. I think you will, if you don't already have it, I think you will have a letter, uh, stating that they have no concerns. Uh, particularly since we moved the, uh, the, any of the disturbance or completely off the steep slopes. I also had a call from, um, Katrina Schindeldecker, uh, earlier today. Tell, telling me they expect they will be issuing a, a letter, um, uh, telling you that they're okay with the plan. Uh, they could, they frankly, they didn't, didn't get the last latest set of plans in time to play up, prepare that letter. But they assure you they have it in their sights to deliver a letter to you. And I believe that that letter is going to be positive based on all the original, um, earlier discussions. So with that, I'd ask David if he would take over the screen and, and give you some, some more highlights of the, of the plan.
Sure. Thank you, Glenn, and good evening, members of the board. Um, as I think Glenn really, um, picked up the main points from the last, um. Memo random we received from Mr. Gainer. We, the main points that were the plantings within. Slopes twenty percent and steeper. So to address that, I moved any trees, shrubs, um, within that, um. Slope analysis and put them in lesser slopes. Um, and the, the, the other kind of. Major comment was about the existing drainage down the driveway, which, uh, the engineers have addressed. Um, but at the, essentially the, um, it's a landscape improvement plan that you can see with. Native mixed evergreen and deciduous plantings alongside the drive to, um. Provide evergreen coverage through the winter months and also help mitigate views of neighboring properties. If I zoom into the main area around the house, we've improved the. Entrance to the house and, um. The courtyard to the rear is where there's an existing parking lot, gravel parking lot. So we're proposing trees and a decorative water feature. And there's an, in the, the front of the house, there's an existing wood deck and. In place of the wood deck, we're proposing a stone deck and, and. An expansion of the pool room, the existing pool room, um, to the west to. It basically enclosed the existing wood deck. But, um, so opening it up to any questions to, to the public and to the board.
Let, let's hold off on that, sir. Um, so, so Ron, Ron and Steve, any comments you want to add at this point?
Again, the, uh, major concerns of the board with the steep slope disturbances. As evidenced on both of these plans, they've now removed, uh, all of those disturbances. They've also addressed the. Issue raised by the board to, to, uh, improve drainage to, uh. Reduce or mitigate the erosion that was visible during the sidewalk along the driveway. Uh, these plans serve to do that.
Ron, uh, Steve, anything?
I think the plan is pretty straightforward at this point. I, I believe the board's ready unless it asks questions to receive any public comments.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Heidi, Kelly, do we have any members of the public?
No, we don't.
Okay. Can I have a motion then to close the public hearing? Oh, Kim, Kim?
Oh, I have questions, but I can ask them after we close.
No, it's fine. Go, go ahead, go ahead.
So, um, I see that Katrina Schindeldecker is actually on this, um, in the audience here. So maybe she could tell us about the conservation easement.
Katrina, are you there?
Oh, she was there. It looks like she's gone. Okay.
Katrina?
I don't see, I, I don't see her, Kelly. She was there before, but I don't see her now. So she must, um, oh, there she is.
Um, I'm here. Um, the conservation easement basically. Allows for one house accessory structures, structures and gardens. Um, you know, we have a previous set of plans, um, that we were able to review and we didn't observe anything that we saw. That created significant concern. We just haven't had an opportunity to review these plans, um, in their entirety. So. Um. You know, everything is staying right around the house. Um, the easement allows for gardens. Um, when I watched the Conservation Board on Monday, um, the question asked, which was similar to one that we had. Was about whether there would be any chipping or blasting or something for the water feature. Um, and they made clear that they would be building up as opposed to going down. They're staying away from the steep slopes on the property. And if you've been on the driveway, the driveway is honestly. Um, an erosion nightmare. Um, so we're happy that they are making sure that kind of the silt and the sediment that has been continuously washing off of the driveway. Will no longer be doing so. Um, but that said, um, neither Julia, who is on the phone. Or on the meeting with me, nor I have had an opportunity to really look at the updated plans, you know, in depth. So, you know, kind of at our first. Look, there was nothing that jumped out at us and caused significant concern. But we just didn't have an opportunity to do a thorough review. Um, and we didn't think it appropriate to respond. Um, until we had had an opportunity to do so.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Other, other, other board members' questions? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Peter. On, uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Extensions. Okay, public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. Ron, next steps?
Uh, well, with the close of the hearing, uh, procedurally, uh, what remains is just a secret declaration. And then an approval resolution.
Um, I feel like at least my observation is this is the role of benign activity going on unless, uh, anyone feels otherwise. I'd like to have a motion to ask Ron to prepare those documents for us, but this declaration and approval declaration. Any, thank you, Peter. Maybe a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Neil. Uh, a discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, extensions. Okay, so Ron, if you can prepare those materials for us for our next meeting, we'd, uh, we'd appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Um, with any, anyone else, uh, we're moving on to new business. New, I, I would call this new old, do we have a category called new old business? I think Mr. Joseph Pelle Lombardi has come before us many times in many. Versions and we welcome him back here again this evening. I don't know, are you Glenn? Are you also representing this gentleman?
I am.
Okay.
Um, put this up.
You know, when you retire, we may just have to call wherever we need physically or virtually the Glennon Watson Memorial or honorary meeting zone like the, uh. Like the, uh, what's his name who has the, uh, the, uh, Marzolo Center. We have to give you a name to wherever we do planning board meetings. So let's do Pelle Lombardi, please.
Okay.
Present the case.
I'm going to share my screen again. Do you have it?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, this is quite a small part, parts, two relatively small parcels, one very small, which Mr. Lombardi owns. And a larger parcel owned by his neighbor. The, 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 as, as we had a similar thing, we had, the, with the, uh, Magazzino. Um, application earlier. If you look at the, to the upper right, maybe I can get myself over there. Um, miss, the top panel here is Mr. Lombardi's house, uh, the property, which is improved with a house, which he's. Spent significant time and I'm certain significant money improving. Um, and the Mr. Leach's property behind it, which you can see the proportion is, is, is significantly different. Uh, the second panel shows you an area of Mr. Leach's property that is proposed to be conveyed. We didn't have to, that time to color it today. From Mr. Leach to Mr. Lombardi to make his lot less non-conforming, but Mr. Leach's property will remain conforming. Um, so it's, it's merely a lot line adjustment. There is no intention to build anything more. Or, and there's no interference with any septic or wells. Um, so it's moving a lot, making one little, a small. Uh, small, non-conforming lot somewhat larger, not conforming, but somewhat larger. And, uh, leaving Mr. Leach with, uh, a, a conforming, uh, actually, I think two conforming lots, uh, two conforming lots, but, uh. Together, they're certainly well beyond conforming. So that's our whole story. Um, I noticed in Ron's, um. Memo that he said we were near some state lands and would require a public hearing as a result. But I'm not certain what state lands that is. I'd like to know. Um, because.
The public hearing is driven by the subdivision requirement.
Right. There was a particular issue that you raised with regard to being near the state land, unless I'm incorrect.
Um, well, I'll confirm that with you, but the, the public hearing is, is driven by the subdivision regulations.
Right. Okay. Well, then I, I would just close and say that it's exactly the same application. I don't know precisely why Mr. Lombardi withdrew, but I think, but I will speculate a little bit. That he really didn't want to be seen to be riding on the coattails or taking advantage of the subdivision that Sina Hudson did. Um, and with the convey, proposed conveyance to the Civic Association of which Mr. Lombardi is a very active member. So I, I suspect and merely suspect. That he just didn't want to appear to be riding on those coattails. And I think that's probably why he did it, but at any rate. Um, once that was closed, we reactivated the application and, um, we seek, uh, you're, um, moving this to a public hearing.
All right. Uh, Ron, first, any thoughts?
Right. The board has a technical memorandum from my office. As, as Glenn describes, this is an identical subdivision. Application to that you originally received back in February. Board had actually advanced that application to the point of having a, a scheduling, a public hearing. However, the app, it withdrew the, the application prior to the, uh, occurrence of the hearing. Um, so you were taking various matters back then, since it's a new application. Procedurally, you still have to accomplish identical actions. So if, if you just go to the. Bottom of, uh, page two of my memorandum, we could just summarize what was done previously, uh, so you can move this along. Uh, as you did originally, the project qualifies as a minor subdivision. At this initial meeting, you should classify it as such with respect to seeker and the current, uh, DC regulations. Uh, lot line adjustments represent a type two action pursuant to seeker, which don't require any further review. So upon your, uh. Declaring it as such a type two action, you include your secret responsibilities. That's another thing that could be done tonight. Uh, since it's a new application, even though it was done before, you have to make referral to Putnam County Department of Planning. Uh, they had responded previously, so it should be a simple matter to get another response out of them on this latest application. Uh, and then there were also a few minor issues on the plat that's been submitted in terms of required data. That is not showing, but again, since there's no improvements proposed. Uh, in the original application, you waived the requirement for certain technical data. And I think it's appropriate to consider that waiver again for this application. And then lastly, the schedule of public hearing.
That all seems fair. Steve?
I think Ron covered it. You're going to want motions, um, just to declare it a type two, make the referral. And when you have a resubmital like this, I mean. Look, you have the right to go on a site visit if you want to, but generally speaking, you would, would try to schedule the public hearing on an expedited basis.
That's right, reasonable. All right. Any questions for either the applicant or Ron or Steve, my fellow board members? No? Okay. All right. Let, let's have a motion, uh, to declare this a minor project, please. Thank you, Tim. Peter, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions. Thank you. Type two action, maybe a motion, please, to that effect, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed, extensions, uh, referral to county planning, please. Motion to that effect. Thank you, Neil, for the heavy nod of your head. All, a second. Thank you, Peter. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, extensions. And then one, you had me for a waiver of what? What are we waiving?
Uh, some minor data, the requirement for, uh, rock out crops, onsite soils. Trees greater than eight inch DBH. On the location of wells and septic sun lands within 200 feet.
Yeah, I, I will take, I'm not going to repeat all those items, but may have a waiver for that data to not be put on the plat.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. A second. Any discussion on that matter? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed.
Aye.
Thank you. I agree. Let's schedule the public hearing for the next board meeting. Which will be shocking that our first, only one so far for next month so far. Good. May have a motion to schedule a public hearing for next month.
Or aye, or.
A second.
Second.
Him. All in favor say aye.
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 Extension is very good. All right. So anything else we got to do for this?
Now that covers it.
I, I, oh, sorry. You didn't know. You mentioned something. We are site plan visit. Does anyone feel a compunction to go traipsing? No, thank God. Okay. That is reasonable. All that the absence of dogma. The dogma does not live strongly in us, I think, I guess I'd say. So. And that's the end. What?
I'll remember that.
Yeah. Well, it's about judgment calls, Glenn. About judgment calls. All right. So let's, let's, that's the end of Lombardi. We're going to move on to flag. I will be recusing myself for both. I am approximate neighbor. I did, I did share some comments about the project at the ZBA hearing. So I'm recuse myself and our second vice chair will have the, the duty of management. Kim, want to share the burden a little bit between you.
At this late hour.
And I will say, Neil, we, in Kelly, as I said at the top of the hour, we are, I don't believe we'll get to three, six, two, two, route nine. This is probably going to take at least 15 minutes. Going past our two hour mark. So depending how far we go, but I, please let the applicant know we, I doubt we were going to get to three, six, two, two this evening.
Okay, thanks, Neil.
Keys are yours.
Thank you. So let's, all right, well, let's, let's, let's roll through. We've got an application, Ron. We've got a. Well, let's go to the applicant and then we'll go to Ron, then we'll go to. Steve and then back to the, back to the board. But essentially what we're starting off with is a. An application is the planning board that is running concurrently with something from the ZBA. So. Let's hear from the applicant then. Do we have it rep? Glenn, is this you?
Not me.
That would be David Spence.
David Spence. Okay.
David, are you there? David?
Muted.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, David.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, so I have perhaps two minutes of a prepared narrative to describe the project. So I'd like to start out with saying good evening to Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, residents of the town of Garrison and Phillips Town. My name is David Spence. I'm the architect of the proposed project. And I've been watching. Your meeting for the last hour or so, and I'd like to add, this is a much more interesting town, town hall meeting. Than the others tonight. So the story begins with our client. Who bought the subject property in 2011. Have used as an extended weekend retreat from their New York City residents. Over that time, they have invited family and friends for the, for the weekend and overnight stays, stays in their countryside home. Currently, the home's three small guest bedrooms sharing one bath has made it difficult to accommodate everyone. Furthermore, with young adult children, the owners also anticipate the family circle. Growing sometime in the near future and thus wish to provide adequate space for them. After extensive renovations to the home's kitchen and master bath a couple of years ago, they wish to embark on phase two of their vision and extend the home's capacity for accommodating their guests. Thus, they came to us with a mandate to design an addition that includes a family room, a fifth bedroom with its own bath, a small cold frame greenhouse and storage space. For their garden equipment to replace the original garden shed. The challenge for us was to design the addition in a manner that would respect the scale and the historic character of the existing home and property. Had we glommed on to the existing house with an addition built in the typical fashion, a couple of critical issues would arise. Number one. The size and scale of the original house could drastically change. And number two, the addition would prevent the bucolic views of the existing rear yard landscape from the second floor bedrooms. Instead, we decided to respect the original home's footprint and its hadock ad hoc forms of porches and dormers. And build the proposed addition in the form of our traditional barn structure several feet away from the house. Then connecting it with a covered pergola. Particular care was taken to respect the scale of the house. We made sure the height of the addition does not overwhelm the existing house. And we slightly borrowed it into the landscape. The connecting pergola echoes the detailings of the existing wraparound porch with carpenter Gothic columns and freezeboard brackets. The covered pergola is intended to allow the owners to freely move back and forth between the existing and proposed spaces during inclement weather. Much like the gentleman's farm dotted around the Hudson Valley, we feel that when built, the house and barn. Addition will complement each other and fit well within the rural character of Old Albany Post Road. With respect to why we are here before you today, as you know, like many homes of the, of this generation, six, 699 was built very close. To Old Albany Post Road. And as such, the house's footprint extends over the front yard setback, thus creating a non-conforming situation with the current zoning requirements. Additionally, the lot is undersized for this zone and therefore does not conform to the current ordinances. For these reasons, any addition to the house, regardless of its size, requires the zoning board to grant a special permit. Two months ago, we made our initial submission to the zoning board and have been before the zoning board twice since then. In the last meeting, the zoning board requested a review and comment from you, the planning board on this application so that we may, so they may complete their process of review. Additionally, I'd like to note that we have also submitted to the Hudson Highlands Land Trust and have received a conceptual approval in writing for the project. Once we have the final details such as paint colors and materials established, we will then seek to get their final approval. The intent of this presentation is to give the owners some level of assurance that they may proceed before engaging with the various professionals in developing the required additional site plan, design and engineering. Though not everything is fully worked out to its final level of detail. It would be helpful for us to know that the project as it appears today. Is acceptable, at least on a conceptual level before additional time and resources are used. On behalf of the owners, we appreciate and thank you for your time and efforts in providing a thorough review of this and all applications that come before you and for protecting this beautiful region of the state. I'm happy to answer any. Questions regarding the, the design and, and such.
Well, let's back up a little bit, David. If you give us a little background on, on the easement, you mentioned Hudson Highland Plan Trust and an easement situation. Includes any conversation about the profile of the house?
Yeah, so there was an easement. There was an easement from the Hudson Highlands Land Trust that was created along Old Albany Post Road. As a view corridor and as such, the easement. Basically created some limitations on where the addition, any addition to the home could be created. So we followed those guidelines. And. When we submitted the, pretty much the same drawings that you have before you today, they had reviewed them and found that that was in compliance with their easement restrictions.
Ron?
Yeah, okay, the. Is the board of any desire to, to. See the site plan drawings on screen at all? Are you satisfied with the? The paper prints that the board has received individually?
I'm okay with the drawings.
Okay, good. You've got a technical memo from, from my office. This is the initial presentation of the applicant. As the applicant indicates and as I think Steve will speak to, there's. A variety of issues that the zoning board is currently addressing. That. This suspense has gone through to some, some detail. Again, being the initial presentation of the application. You typically go through classification of the project, since it's a residential project, it should be deemed a minor. Project. You could do that at tonight's meeting. A short form EAF has been provided. So you can just accept that for the board. The. Let's see, the referrals that may be appropriate relate to the expansion of the number of bedrooms on the property. You typically would want to get confirmation from the Putnam County Department of Health. That the onsite utilities are sufficient to service the additional. Accumbency of the property. Or likewise have them identify the extent of improvements necessary to satisfy. And then lastly, it's a, it's a matter of. One, responding to or determining how to respond to the zoning board requests for initial information from the board. And also determining whether you wish to conduct a site visit as part of your own review for the site plan review.
All right, Steve?
One thing, Ron, they don't need a 239M referral?
I couldn't see any, any thresholds that would drive that. No.
All right, all right. Just wanted to make sure of that. So yes, I think Ron's correct. Resolution by the board. Saying that it's a minor project, resolution declaring it a type two action. And after that. The issue is what, if anything, does the planning board want to send to the zoning board? The zoning board has sent a letter over. Requesting any comments that you might wish to make on this project. The zoning board is not looking for the planning board. To comment on whether or not the variances, the special permit, I guess it is for the, for. Developing on a non-conforming lot.
We want to open it up to the planning board then and see what, what comments they might want to make to the ZBA.
But just, just to be clear, it should be comments that you may have regarding your site plan approval, which will be sought on this. Do you view visual aspects as a problem? Do you view traffic? Do you view lot coverage is, is, is. The landscaping an issue that you're interested in? Now, I realize it's going to be a little tough to do that. You know, right out of the box, the first time through. So don't feel that you need to give detailed comments. We want to see this. We're going to require that. It's enough that the board could say we have concerns over these issues. And I think the zoning board would welcome that. If you could be more detailed, they'd be even happier. If you don't want to say anything, you don't have to say anything. We can just respond that the planning board has no comments in regard to the relief sought from the zoning board at this time.
So then we. Would it be appropriate to do that, to do a site visit and then make our, our references or recommendations of the ZBA?
It would be appropriate. It isn't required, of course. It's up to the, the board whether you think you need that in order to make your comments or not.
Okay. Well, let's put it out. Kim?
Well, I, I drive by that property a lot, so I know what it looks like. I don't know if I have to have a site visit before I could make comments. I, I think. One of the concerns that. We always have with older houses is whether or not the septic is adequate for any addition. So you know, if that's a comment that's appropriate for the ZBA. You know, that, that there's. A lot of these older houses don't even necessarily have proper fields. I don't know what the situation is with this one, but. You know, they might have a pit and like a two drum system with a pipe between them, that kind of thing. So I guess the concern would be whether or not there's adequate. Space to put in fields if there are. That would be a concern.
All right. Yeah, I know that I, I have concerns about this looking more like a separate building than an addition. So I mean, I don't know what, what point we entertain those ideas, but. Moving forward. Ron?
Yeah, technically, you're going to have standard technical issues to be addressed, but the only. The only overriding concern I would have is what I voiced in the memo and what Kim has just touched on. The ability of the site to support. The additional bedroom or even the adequacy of the existing system in place to service the premises. So that's, that's an important matter that must be resolved as it moves through the process.
All right. So what, what referrals can we get? I mean, we, we always want to try and keep them moving. Any referrals that we can make at this point?
Well, at some point, you're going to want to make referral to the Department of Health. It's not required procedurally, but you're going to need their, their guidance as to the adequacy of the. The well and septic system onsite.
So we're ready to do that now?
You could. Yeah, you have the basic information understood in terms of the number of bedrooms.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's take it one at a time then. Are we ready to move as far as. Declaring it a minor site plan, making the referral to the health department and fire department?
I think we are.
Wasn't it trick question?
Which one of us are you asking?
I was asking Ron.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was waiting for the board to weigh in. Yeah, certainly there are actions that should be taken tonight.
Okay. So then can we hear, all right, let's listen then and then we'll go through them.
Minor site plant, right?
Minor site plan, health department referral, fire department referral. We're all good on that?
Need somebody to make a motion and then somebody to second it.
I'm just trying to line them up first. Okay, so can I hear a motion to make a referral to the health department?
I'll make that.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I vote aye. Okay, referral to the North Island or Garrison Fire?
Garrison.
Garrison Fire Department. Can I hear a motion to make a referral to the Garrison Fire Department?
I'll make that motion.
Like Dennis.
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye. And then.
Yeah, you can also declare a type two action pursuant to seeker and conclude that action.
Okay. Can I hear a motion to declare it a type two action?
Sure. I'll make it type two action. I'll make a motion to declare it type two.
And a second.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Aye.
And site plan, or a site visit rather?
Make that motion.
Kelly, do we want to look for a date for a site visit?
Sure. You can do Sunday, November 1st, Sunday, November 8th. Where you could do the 15th, which is Sunday before your next meeting in November.
How about the 15th? So it's fresh in our minds.
I'm okay with the 15th.
November, November 1st, so a month from today. Okay. Can I hear a motion for a site visit on November 15?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 It's 9:30 AM on November 15th.
9:30 AM. Okay.
In regard to the ZBA's request, since you're not going to have your site visited until November. Shall we send a letter to the ZBA saying that you've received their letter, you have knowledge receipt of it? You're going to go on a site visit in November and you will provide them with a response letter after your site visit? Do you want to send a response letter prior to your site visit? Do you, you not want to send a response letter at all? I mean, how does the board feel about that?
Go ahead. Kim, anybody?
Well.
I sort of want to take, I sort of want to take a look before I say anything.
I don't understand this response letter, to be honest with you, in a way, because. It seems like we're saying, oh yeah, we're probably going to approve this, so you guys should follow along.
You're not doing that at all, Kim.
That isn't what we're saying?
No, no. What you, what you're saying is we've received an application for site plan approval. We understand that the. Zoning board would like to know what our concerns are, or at least initial concerns are. They know you aren't held a public hearing or anything yet. And then you just say tip of the iceberg. Visual. And then you just say, tip of the iceberg, visual, tip of the iceberg, concerned about the adequacy of the septic system, tip of the iceberg. You know, concerned if the landscaping is sufficient to modify any visual impacts. Something along those lines, just broad brush things that, that you think are, will be of concern to you that the ZBA should be aware of before they go ahead and if, and if they grant it or adversely if they deny it, I mean, they should be aware of how, what the planning board views as issues, at least broad brush, big, big ticket issues on this application.
So, so Kelly, the ZBA meeting is November the 9th, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so maybe we need to, if we're going to wait till we have a site visit to.
If you send them a letter saying that we've received your letter, ZBA, and we need more time to provide you with comments, I'm sure the ZBA will hold the matter open.
Right, I was just, do we, do we want to make it easier for them?
Oh, if you want to, yeah, by all means, you could certainly do that. That's, that's.
All right, so the next ZBA is on the 9th?
9th of November, yeah.
9th, so we'd be kind of hard pressed to get in there for a site visit prior to that.
You'd probably want to get together and talk about what you want to put in the letter anyway, as opposed to chatting at the site visit and then trying to get that put into correspondence.
Yeah. Okay, well then we can leave it where it is. And we can tell them that we're going to have a site visit and, and you know, we'll get back to them and after we've had our next meeting.
We'll let them know what we see on the 15th and we'll go from there.
May I send a letter to the ZBA telling them that?
Sure. I'll make a motion that Steve send a letter to the ZBA telling them. Peter, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Kim.
Um, may I ask a, a couple of questions? This is David.
Absolutely.
So. As far as I know, the ZBA is looking at this property in terms of its adherence to zoning requirements, this and due to the setback issues of the existing or original home as well as the, the lot size. So my question is, does the comments that come from the planning board have relevance to those two specific issues that the zoning board is sort of using as their metric to review the, the property? So in other words, when things like septic systems and things like that come up, I don't know that that's specifically a zoning concern, though it may be a planning board concern. So in terms of review and comment for the letter that is sent back to them, I'm just asking how, how those things are relevant to what, how they're reviewing the project.
They.
The zoning board is not asking the planning board to tell the zoning board how to process a application for variances or a special permit, I think it is in this instance. They're asking the planning board what the planning board's concerns are. Those concerns may or may not be relevant to the zoning board's determination, but it's what the zoning board asked for, and so it's what the planning board has to provide. In case we say we're concerned about septic and the zoning board says, okay, doesn't have anything to do with our determination, but thanks for telling us.
I see.
So again, it's David?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, this is sort of where you're at with this. You've, you've got the setback issue, which is, that, that building's been there for a hundred years, so you're, they're not going to give you a hard time about the setback. You're at what? You, you don't meet the 50 feet or something like that. They're not going to give you a hard time about that. Where you're going to run into an issue, an issue is about the septic and the nature of the building that you want to build and what you're, what that's going to do to your septic profile.
Right.
That's going to be what you're up against with the zoning board.
Right. So just, just so you see where we're coming from, like what we're trying to do is sort of meet with all, all of the various boards and try to get, you know, sort of work our way up the ladder, so to speak, to gain confidence that the project will move forward conceptually. And then we understand that, you know, we will provide various specifications and details and drawings of septic systems and so on and so forth. So what we're kind of, but before the owner sort of spends all the time and resources and effort to do all of that. And, and again, I'm not looking for that tonight at all. This is just about presenting the project. But that's sort of the philosophy we're, we're taking on this is just sort of small bites, incremental, like are we feeling good about this project moving forward so that we can then take the next steps? And so being that there's two boards that we're working with simultaneously, you know, it's, 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 it's a challenge to sort of manage.
Yeah, no, I, I, and I, and I get that, but I think you, I mean, I think you're, I mean, I, I think it's, it's sort of good to know where you're at going into things like this. I mean, I do this all the time and I go to, I go to people and I say, look, this is where you're at.
Yeah.
So this is where you're at. You've got your setback, it's not a problem. You got your setback, or you've got your septic that's going to be a problem. And you're, you're, you're trying to build a separate building and call it an addition. And that's, I think, where you're, that's what I think you're, that's where I think your focus should be at this point in the, in the application.
Right, okay. Okay, by, by code, it is an addition, so we'll.
Same.
Yep, we'll.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, you guys done?
Thanks, Neil.
All right, thank you, Neil. Thank you very much. Both our vice chairs have definitely proven this evening to be worthy of their August titles. And stop, stop, these, these two are always trying to do a coup, a coup de Neil. I look forward to it one day. I wish you luck. All right, so we, it's 9:50 right now. We've been at this for two hours. Kim, I'm just joking, I'm trying to keep it light. Two hours and 20 minutes we're in. I don't know the complexity of the 3622 application. Can we do it in 10 minutes? What do people think? Ron, you've seen this application. Do we get done a initial presentation in 10 minutes or is that going to go beyond, you think?
Again, it's, it's a new application. The, the applicant's presentation will take 10 minutes, but there are, if you, if you open the issue, I'll open the matter, you know, there's some basic things you can resolve.
All right, do I have people's comfort to continue on for 10 to 15 more minutes?
We read the documents, we might as well do it.
Let's, let's do this and I would ask the applicant to please be brief and to the point.
Oh.
Yes, Mr. Thiberg.
Yes, good evening. Thanks for hearing me at this late time in the evening. Just to quickly, can I share my screen?
Yes, yes.
So yes, thank you again for, for hearing our application this evening. Here representing the applicant 3622 Route 9 LLC for a site plan application at that address on Route 9 in Cold Spring. The site is four and a half acres, currently holds one primary and an accessory structure that's generally been used over the last many years as contractor office space and storage. There are three current access points to the site, which we would reduce to two. The existing structures would be removed in service of constructing two new buildings. The service business use would remain as existing, providing for contractor office space and storage. The site plan contemplates the construction of one 15,400 square foot building and one 10,500 square foot building. The site would also provide outdoor storage within the town requirements. The plan as designed would meet all bulk regulations. I can go into some of the finer points of the development of the designing utilities, but just to quickly say that a new well and septic system would be shared between the two buildings. Currently, the stormwater quality is contemplated to be managed through a combination of infiltration and surface practices, but soil testing is being scheduled, which will inform the design going forward. The site does sit within the Clove Creek Aquifer overlay area. So the applicant is seeking a special use related to storage onsite that may be desired by potential tenants. These would include the storage of salt, which would be covered within the potential future hoop house shown in the site plan here. In addition to that, the potential storage of fertilizers, pesticides and herbicides onsite, you can imagine as contractor storage and office space, you know, landscape contractors, snow removal contractors would find that to be a desirable potential to be able to store those. And of course, any such storage would be done in conformance with all standard safety protocols. So just for this initial meeting, you know, we, we would generally be looking at it per Mr. Gainer's memo to confirm that we have a major site plan application. Certainly to advance any referrals. And assuming that the board is going forward with coordinated review, potentially have the board declare their intent as lead agency on this. And of course, to field any questions that the board might have.
Thank you, Mr. Thiberg. Ron, comments, menu memo?
The board has taken a memorandum from my office as the applicant indicates. He's proposing a contractor's yard with major improvements proposed. And I, you know, when we use the term contractor's yard, I think everybody can envision what activities will be conducted on the site. If, by way of background, we've had discussions with the applicant some months ago relative to the the compliance of the use with the underlying zoning. It's an NHC zone. We directed him to go to the code enforcement officer. And Greg, more recently, the town CEO, more recently, had acknowledged that it met the, met the definition of a service business and then he indicates that it's permitted to move forward as a permitted use in the zone. So that's where they are and why they're here today. Just to move it forward, as the applicant indicates and is summarized in my memo, initially the board classifies the project pursuant to your regs, it qualifies as a major project and you should initially classify it as such tonight. With respect to seeker, it's, it's an unlisted action. So at some point we can move that forward. I think the initial thing you, you might wish to do is the referrals. It's along Route 9, there's going to be a required referral to Putnam County Planning, New York State DOT for the improvements planned to the site access, Putnam County Department of Health for the new well and septic systems. And you'd want to make referral to the conservation board. Again, seeing it's a contractor's yard and specifically because there's supposed storage of salt, you'd want to give them an opportunity to weigh in on the application. So those would be the most significant things to do tonight.
Thank you, Ron. Steve?
I, I agree with Ron on that. The, the only thing is, and it's a minor point, but I don't believe that the approvals to be granted by DOT or DOH or even the, the county planning referral constitute an action under secret by an agency. So I don't think you need to declare yourselves lead agency and circulate for lead agency in a coordinator review or anything like that. If you wanted to play it safe though, and you wanted to make, you know, you, you certainly could declare yourselves lead agencies, send out the notice of intent and, you know, wait 30 days. Those other agencies are certainly not going to claim and play you dot your i's and cross your t's. But again, I, I really don't think that's necessary. It's just if the board wants to be cautious about it.
Here's, thank you very much. Here's what I'm going to ask, and I, I can imagine there are many questions. It's a large scale building. There's the Clove Creek, which those of us who've been the board for some time are well familiar with. So I'd like to, I'd like to suggest that we take care of referrals to increase information flow to us as a board, but we hold discussion of this, because I, I can imagine this would be quite a lengthy conversation at 10 o'clock at night. And that's a lot for a volunteer group of unpaid people. So with, with some, for some, with, with everyone's discretion, let's people be burning question or two to hit. I'd like to suggest we make a number of referrals, get more information flowing and move on and call it quits for the evening. So they want to have a burning question they have to ask tonight. Okay, I'm going to run through the litany of referrals and declarations so we can get the administration portion on and move from there. So may I have a motion to declare this a major project, please?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
No, second.
Say aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Opposed? Fine, thank you. I, I do, Steve, I will suggest we declare ourselves the lead agency for secret. Again, when I hear Clove Creek Aquifer Overlay District, I say there's maybe some interest from other parties. So I'd like a motion to that effect, please. Lead agency for secret, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kim. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Neil. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed abstentions, thank you.
This is the point of confirmation that you're intending that to be a coordinated review with other agencies? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll take the action then for the conservation board referral. Have a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Peter. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Neil. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Putnam County Department of Planning, let's have a new, let's have a new motion giver. Maybe Laura, maybe Laura, you'd like to make this motion.
Come on, Laura.
Come on.
Okay, I'll give this motion.
Oh, Mazel tov. All right, have another second. Someone, second. Heidi, there we go. Heidi's. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Highway, State Department of Transportation, given the fact that I assume this is access from Route 9. All in, motion, Kim, second, Neil, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, extensions. And then a courtesy referral to the North Island Fire Department, which I think, oh wait, I forgot, yeah, we're good. This is the last one. North Island Fire Department, courtesy referral, a motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
Heidi, Mazel, thank you. Second, the cat, Kim's cat seconded it. I saw it. Someone, seriously though.
Oh, oh.
Thank you, all. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, all right. I feel like that gets the project moving, at least Mr. Thiberg. We can debate and discuss it at our next meetings. I think there's a lot to chat about. I'm sure many people have questions about the way I hear salt, but near the Clove Creek Aquifer overlay, I get, you know. You can imagine what we're going to ask questions about.
Great, I appreciate that.
Site visit or are you going to hold off till next month?
Uh, we could do it. We, I think that's a fair thing. Anyone opposed to that? That's fair. So let's schedule a site visit. Kelly, can you give some dates, please, so we can then vote on the?
Can we do it on the 15th, the same?
Yeah, I can do the same dates. A great idea. So, all right, so November 15th, we can just decide which one we do first. It would be helpful to know which one we're going to do and which.
We, we told the other people 9:30, so we should probably tell these people 10:30.
Your 10:30, Mr. Thiberg, I get to sleep in then. Great, all right, they have a motion to that effect, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All right, so Kelly, you'll make them the appropriate. And so just to recall, thank you, Mr. Thiberg. Do we have any, we scheduled one public hearing for next month, right, Lombardi?
Right.
When we closed all three of our open ones, okay. All right, well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the lengthy evening, two and a half hours. It's still, uh, no one will get overtime on this board, but you've all earned the, the, the adoration of Richard Jay and Bob Flaherty and the rest of the town board, so well done. All right, motion adjourned?
So moved.
All right, everybody. Thanks for your time tonight.
All right.
I didn't hear a phone.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting, no one's seconding it.
Peter did.
All right, night, God bless.
Second it.
All right, good night, everybody.
Evening all, bye bye.
Thanks, Roy. Thanks for your work, guys. Thank you.